You don't want to transfer?
Yes. I think it should be.
We want.
Yeah.
Different states.
None of your stuff. That's in the regular years.
Sorry.
Yeah. Fifty is really hard to find. Apparently. Everybody's got a super.
Apparently I don't see. I'm sure that I mean some type of power. They all move. I'm glad that's what kind of power I have. They all move.
How are you?
You have a good night.
Good.
I wouldn't have been powerful if I had.
Derek's wearing.
How's that?
That was. That was my. Yes, I'm so.
The other person. School crashing.
That's right. I'm going to tell my family. Yeah. Especially this story today.
Let's call me the word of one allegiance. One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on under God and equal with liberty and justice for all. Report of any executive sessions?
There were none.
Public comment? Wants to go for. Those are behind the four.
Usually I say the best for last. Jeff Donco Palo Alto just want to bring up. Guys were all about transparency and working together. Requested getting the balances of the CARES Act and our funds and where they were spent. Like I said, I had hammer boots for nine months to get those answers. I think the public deserves to know where that money's at. Spoke about bad access, Larry. You said the policy is being worked on. I would like to request and implore that the county shut down the public access until the policy is done. Employees let somebody else in, they could be terminated, they could be suspended. They used their car to let someone else in. Cards have already been shut off for allowing other people in. So I think their cards should be shut off until the policy goes into effect. Also, still waiting on the investigation report for the fifth Jane Doe. Where's that at? What's the status of it? Eckert Siemens report, where's that at? Taxpayers pay $15,000 for that report. Somebody said you've seen it. Somebody said no, you've requested it. Where's that? Let the public know. Also, the hiring of AgVos mediation firm for dispute resolution, $300 an hour for a session, $170 an hour for prep work. Is that related to George's lawsuit? I'm just trying to figure out how much that pervert's cost to the county and the taxpayer. So I'd like to know if that's related to him or not. Nine in one center, again over 20 overtime shifts. Some people working 12, 16 hour shifts on Monday holiday get paid $75 an over an hour because they can't fill the shifts. Red flags all over the place. Tomorrow marks 888 days. Make sure you play that number in the lottery. The Guinness Book of World Records longest unpaid bogus suspension and retaliation. When are you going to bring the women back? How many fake investigations do you need and drawn out before these women are brought back? The office is in shambles, we know that. Bring them back and fix it. Lastly, I see the appointments to some of these boards. I guess the election promises are coming through. A lot of them are big donors or in the PACs that is get money from. Just wanted to, when can I put my resume in? Job that you promised. Ken's here now, maybe he'll retire and I can take it now. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Stan Kovac Palo Alto. I see Kent is here today. I hope that this reassessment thing, I see they're already setting up two years ahead of time, which is okay with me that they're going to have the appeals people in there. And I hope and pray that these people weren't just like you said, politically motivated that they got these jobs and are thinking about senior citizens who are hurting, they're crushed, and veterans are crushed by these taxes to begin with. I'm tired of talking about it. It's time for action. I think that what we got to do is look at who's paying what and everything like that. They do not take into consideration what a person makes, what they can pay out fairly, not what they own or what they were able to buy when they were working and serving the country by paying their taxes all the time. This is nonsense. I hope the people on Zoom or whoever is doing this now, I hope that they are listening and hit your politicians, especially senior citizens and veterans that can't afford this. I and my wife are on set income. If I lose my house, like I told you already, I talked to Senator Argo. I said, I ever lose my home, guess who I'm going to live with? And I pointed right to him. I said, you. And you're not going to like the person I drive with. Do you think I'm going to be rough on him? Wait till he sees her. All right? And I'm tired of this. This is nonsense. This is complete nonsense. I know we have to have reassessment for taxes for paying for schools, for county and everything else, but let's hit the people that have the money, that then make sure they make their fair share. These people have done it their whole life, 50 and 60 years and more. This is ridiculous. We're losing homes right left. I don't know what you have to hear. I don't know what you have to see. People out in the streets. I mean, come on. Go to Palo Alto, like I said, and sometimes there's tent cities up. This is ridiculous. Why do we have to pressure people like that? And like I said, these people, right now, you know who's going to be doing the appeals? I hope they have a listening ear and take heed to what I'm saying about people losing their homes. It's not fair. There's got to be a better process and I don't want any school county citizen that paid their whole life to lose their home because nonsense like this. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Melinda Dyer, North Manhattan Township. A strong retaliation case must show three things. An employee faced discrimination or harassment in the workplace. Number two, the employee reports the incident. And number three, the employee was then fired, demoted, or otherwise punished for their complaint. On March 16th, 2021, a federal lawsuit was filed by four county employees against Commissioner George Halkovitch, Solicitor Glenn Roth, County Administrator Gary Bender, and Human Resources Directors Heidi Zula and Doreen Kussler. One day later, on March 17th, 2021, Commissioner Halkovitch, Commissioner Boots Hetherington, and Controller Sharon Yakichik, as members of the County Salary Board, voted to make changes to the offices of Tax Claim and Tax Assessment. Commissioner Gary Hess voted no to all changes, stating it would be a demotion of the two employees who would be affected by those changes. Wise decision, Gary. I applaud you on that. This so-called restructuring of the tax offices resulted in a $17,000 pay cut for one of these employees and a $9,000 pay cut for the second employee. Both of these employees were plaintiffs on that federal lawsuit that I mentioned. You had better believe this is retaliation at its finest. In September of 2021, both of these employees were suspended by County Administrator Gary Bender. Absolutely an unfair punitive suspension. The longer this suspension continues, the greater the liability to the county taxpayers. These two employees have been cleared by the Attorney General's Office and by an unemployment referee. Eckert Siemens was retained by the county on November 4th, 2021, to conduct an independent investigation. Here we are two years and three months later. Where is that report? Maybe the findings were not what the county wanted to see. For some reason, this suspension seems to be driven by our county administrator and Commissioner Boots Hetherington.
That's your three minutes.
Let's end it.
Any other public comment? If you want to do it from there.
I'm going to stay here.
Okay.
Okay. Shirley Wagner, Porter Township. I just want to verify that you are meeting tomorrow with the polluters and who is included in this meeting?
Right now it's just the commissioners and our attorneys and the over, well, the representatives from the three companies.
Okay. And what are the three companies that are coming?
NSP, Stavola.
Liberty Soils.
Liberty Soils.
Okay. Thank you.
And there are three that are up there.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Office of Senior Services.
Good morning. The board of uncameral all from Office of Senior Services. We are seeking approval of an addendum to extend the contract for fiscal year 2023, 2024 with Caregivers America LLC of Clark Summit, PA for personal care services. The rate will increase from $20.31 an hour to $22.19 an hour, standardizing the rate for all personal care providers, which has been approved by the Department of Aging. The contract cap will remain at $443,232 as in the prior fiscal year.
Thank you. Children and youth.
Morning. The board of highest force people children and youth. We have two items today. The first is we're asking approval of an agreement with the Institute for Human Resources and Services with the term of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024 for foster care services with predating rates for traditional foster care at $65, medically needed at $75, and respite at $65. And then a second item, an addendum to the agreement with George Jr. Republic, dated October 12th, 2022, to amend the rate for special needs ADA services to $431.31 per EM. This rate adjustment represents the actual cost for services and falls within the amount approved by the State Office of Children, Youth, and Families for maximizing state federal participation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tax assessment.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ken Hader, Tax Assessment. Approvals requested for contracts with the following individuals so they may serve on the School County Board of Appeals effective May 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028. They are Fritz Focus Tamakwa, he's the present chairman, Tim McGidley, Ashland, Denise Moore, Auburn, Anthony Pradetay Ringold, who will serve as an alternate.
Thank you. District Affairs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like approval of the co-op agreement for our American flags for Memorial Day. The award went to National Flags and Display Company, Metal Flags, for the period of January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, for 275 rows or 39,600 flags and 83 cents per flag for a total of $32,888. There is no increase from last year's price, which was the 83 cent per flag. The flag is used to decorate the graves of our deceased School County veterans on Memorial Day. The flags are expected the third week of April and distribution of the flags to our organization to place on the graves will be in May. I requesting a motion at this time.
So, second.
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Commissioner Hetherington, Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Right.
Morning Commissioners. Today I am requesting approval of a revision to the 2018 CBG program moving $299.83 from the Pine Grove Municipal Building ADA Improvement Line item to the Pine Grove ADA Recreation Line item. Thank you.
Thank you. Public words. Morning Commissioners. Good morning.
I'm here for the approval to advertise Saturday, March 2nd, 2024, and Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, for an invitation bid for the sale of as-is surplus vehicles. These bids are due back to the Controller's Office on Monday, April 1st, 2024 by 4:00 PM and will be publicly open and read aloud on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024 at 9:00 AM in the Commissioner's Boardroom. The vehicle will be awarded to the most responsible, responsive bidder at the later date.
How many is there?
Eleven. Till we get the one from Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Turn it off.
Good morning Commissioners. I have two items for today. The first one is the approval of the Treasuries Report entering March 2024 ending balance in all accounts, $95,476,653.80. And then the second item would be approval of the annual 2023 percentages report which relate to the real estate and per capita taxes.
Thank you. County Administrator Gary.
Okay, we have a number of items here. On behalf of the county prison, approval of a contract with Prime Care Medical Incorporated for the Medication Assisted Treatment Program. At the county prison, the program is necessary to comply with federal and state guidelines. The program has an annual cost of $249,947.93 and a per EM rate of $12 per inmate in the program. On behalf of Planning and Zoning Hearing Board, approval is requested to appoint Jonathan Bureau Shetson to the School County Zoning Hearing Board for a term beginning February 28, 2024, December 31st, 2028. On behalf of the School County Fire Chiefs Association for the year 2024, authorization requested to endorse the following as executive board members of the School County Fire Chiefs Association. Frank Sen Gary, Chairman of Gerardville, Robert Lesko, Macadoo, Dave Sadison, Pine Grove, John Blitely, Trackville, Gary Whitmire, Pottsville, and Scott Crater, Fort Carver. Next for the year 2024, authorization requested to endorse the following as advisory board members of the School County Fire Chiefs Association. John Messner of Pottsville, John Kellerman of Minersville, Mark Conley of Tamakwa, Ron Radel of Sacramento, and John Matt of Deer Lake and West Grand Central Townships. Next, on behalf of Northeastern Pennsylvania Alliance, approval to recommend the appointment of Mike Tobash, retired Lieutenant Officer of Potsill, PA, to the NIPA Alliance Board of Directors. Approvals to recommend Noble Bud Quondell of Minersville serve as the NIPA Executive Committee. And finally, on behalf of Risk Management, approval requested of an adjustment of $1,526 to Contract 203-13 for the excess workers compensation insurance policy effective January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023 with Midwest Employers Casualty Company. The contract amount will change from $114,185 to $115,700. Thank you.
Finance.
Commissioners, good morning. This morning I have a couple items. First of all, there are four budget adjustments that are included in your agenda for today. Three are for the prior year, one is for the current year, and they are available outside the boardroom for review. Also Commissioners, I'd like to present a supplemental budget appropriation resolution number 2024-04 on behalf of the Drug and Alcohol Agency, total for $301,360. Commissioners, what this resolution represents is earlier today in the meeting, item 10 concerning the contract with Prime Care Medical. Back in the fall when we were putting the 2024 budget together, we anticipated there was going to be a program, but we only had estimated numbers at that time. Now we have a contract that came forward with more finite numbers. So what we would like to do is we would like to adjust the numbers and the budgetary authority accordingly to accommodate the contract with Prime Care Medical. What this contract is about is a medication assisted treatment program over at the county prison. Total contract is estimated to cost about $501,360 for the year. Initially, it will be paid from the county general fund to the prison's budget, and then it will be reimbursed by Hope New Way Settlement Funds. Those funds began, or we began to receive those. Uh, those funds began, or we began to receive those funds in connection with a settlement in September of twenty twenty-two. It's anticipated that those funds will continue to flow to the county for the next sixteen years. So as long as funding is available, the general fund will be reimbursed from the settlement funds, uh, to re, to make the county general fund whole for the cost.
Kind of motion for resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four. So. Second.
Mr. Fedora?
Yes.
Mr. Hetherington, Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Human Resources.
Hi. Uh, good morning Commissioners. I have, um, two motions today, or not two motions, but two items for approval. Um, the first is approval to retain AgVos mediation and restorative practices of Lancaster for alternate dispute resolution at a rate of three hundred dollars per hour for session, and all preparation is billed at one hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour. And request, uh, approval for requested of a twelve a month renewal of the contract with Equifax Inc., Logic's Equifax Workforce Solutions LLC for the Affordable CARES Act ten ninety-five C reporting. There is a yearly five percent increase, which relates to point zero four five five per employee. The total expenditure of for twenty twenty-three ten ninety-five C reporting is seven thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. For personal actions, we have a motion for the prison, a transfer of Tyler Barnes as a full-time corrections officer at an hourly rate of twenty-three dollars, seven, point, zero, seven, three, zero, and that is effective two twenty-six, twenty-four. And he is from a part-time corrections officer.
No motions, so move. Second.
Commissioner Fedora?
Yes.
Mr. Hetherington, Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Thank you. Any new business? Before we enter. In the nine one ones, there, there's three people training, they're moving up, and then they're moving down to three. They're going in the train, and understanding they can only train three at a time. So they are making some head. So. Other than that, you have anything else? Try the motion here. So, salary board. Report of any executive sessions?
There were none.
Any public comment?
Melinda Diver, North Manhattan Township. I would request that the Salary Board, uh, reexamine, reassess, take a look at the salary that we are currently paying Lisa Stevens, who is the Director of Children and Youth. Um, she ran a fraud, payroll fraud scheme, I believe it was in two thousand and nineteen. And as far as I can tell, she received the most recent three percent pay increase, uh, that employees received. She was a benefactor of that. She actually committed a third degree felony with her payroll fraud that she conducted there in Children and Youth. And for her to be paid eighty-six thousand, ballpark, I think it's somewhere around there, eighty-six thousand dollars a year, really should, she should not even still have her job. And for some reason, the county has been reluctant to pursue criminal charges against her. But meanwhile, we have the two tax claim employees who are on this, uh, really long suspension for some reason. Um, but yet she received, I believe Lisa Stevens received a two-week suspension. And since she's a salaried employee, I'm not really even sure was her pay suspended for those two weeks? Was it actually more like a two-week paid vacation? This is absolutely criminal, what's going on. So I think I'll, I think I'll stop by and talk to our district attorney today to see what he plans to do about this. So Commissioners, can we please, like, and Salary Board Sharon, can we take a look at the salary that Lisa Stevens is being paid? Considering that she, uh, engaged in criminal acts? Could, could we take a look at that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Human Resources.
We have nothing to report.
Any new business? Anyone else? So move.